Thank you. The second item on our work session agenda is the introduction of the 2019-20 Student Board Representatives by the Upper Darby High School Principal, Mrs. Simone. Oh, Mr. Remy is going to do it, actually.
Good evening, Board, Dr. McGary and Upper Darby Community. I'm the Assistant Principal of the Class of 2020. Tonight, I'm able to present to you two individuals who have earned the distinction of student representative to the school board. These two students stand in front of their peers as leaders in academics and student advocacy. Kiran Shazadi is a senior with a rigorous and accomplished academic resume. Kiran came up through our school system from her earliest days at Bywood Elementary School, Beverly Hills Middle School, and here at Upper Darby High School. Her teachers describe her as a mature and driven individual. I know Kiran as a kind and caring individual who always has a smile on her face, willing to help others and advocate for her peers. Lamia Mim is a senior who's enrolled in the challenging academic course load and exemplifies what it is to be a royal. Lamia is a student who has attended SenCal Elementary, Beverly Hills Middle School, and now Upper Darby High School. Lamia is active in the Upper Darby community and an active member in extracurricular activities here at the high school. Her teachers describe her as vibrant and dedicated. When Lamia sat with Mrs. Simone and I last year, the one thing that we really liked is how she informed us how proud she was to have gone through schooling here at Upper Darby High School or and throughout the whole district. And that was something that really like hit home with us. So it's just, you know, something we really want to mention. So here tonight, it's just my honor to present seniors Kiran Shazadi and Lamia Mim.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kiran Shazadi, and I am a senior at Upper Darby High School. And I'm, it's my pleasure to be here tonight, and I'm looking forward to work with everyone and make Upper Darby School District a better place and a better environment for all the students and all the staff members. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Lamia Mim. I'm also a senior at Upper Darby High. And as Mr. Remy said, I love like just being a part of this district. And it's my pleasure to be working with all of you for the rest of the school year.
The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School Board of Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on August 26th from 5:00 p.m. until 5:28 p.m. for real estate matters. And this evening from 6:10 p.m. until 7:20 p.m. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this meeting, this evening's meeting, they were personnel, litigation, and real estate matters. Roll call, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Here.
Mr. Des Newers?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Dr. Rucci? Dr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Mitchell?
Here. And as I said before, Mr. Brown is excused tonight. Dr. Rucci, we have the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. The minutes of the combined work session regular meeting of August 13th, 2019 are in the hands of each board member, and I have made it available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Grant.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. The report of the secretary, please, Dr. Rucci.
Thank you, Madam President. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Any comments from the board? Comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next up is the report of the treasurer, Dr. Rucci.
Thank you, Madam President. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Abstain. Motion carries. The next up is the budgeted personnel and enrollment reports. They have been made available to the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required on either one of those. And now we'll have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, Board President Mitchell, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the Upper Darby community. Please join me again in welcoming our new Student Board Representatives, Kiran Shazadi and Lamia Mim. I, uh, yep. I'm a little shocked and I'm happy, actually, that they didn't go into further discussion about what they want to be when they grow up. They didn't steal my thunder tonight. I had an opportunity to meet with them, with Ms. Simone, a few weeks ago, and just sit down to get to know them and to get to know me. And I see Zoe is here, a former representative to our, to our board as a student, and let them know that they have big shoes to fill and what the expectations here on the community. But I want to let you know a little about how interesting and beautiful these kids are. Kiran wants to be an Air Force pilot. She wants to attend the United States Air Force. I think it's really interesting. We have a really cool conversation about that. We're going to talk about taking the ADVABs test and the things that she needs to look into to do that, and she's excited about it. And Lamia wants to, wants to be a surgeon, a trauma surgeon, correct? That's your lifelong goal. So talked about the schools and what they want to be. So I think it's important that, as we talk about our tagline and what we're trying to do here in the school district, that both of these students, and I think, Wayne, you captured it well, are excellent. They represent the excellence of the school district, and we wish you the best of luck, and we're going to help you get there. That's our ultimate plan. So congratulations on being here, and we look forward to working with you as much as you're going to work with us. On August the 20th, we welcome back our entire staff. In total, we have over 1,700 employees to serve over 12,000 students, including 102 new professional staff. I'm blessed to work with outstanding group of administrators in this district, as well as a dedicated teaching and support staff. We have a great team, and I mean it, a great team of people working here in this district. On August the 20th, we continue the time-honored tradition in this district of recognizing everyone who contribute to the success of our schools and students. And I feel it is important to recognize the many different departments and individuals that make this school district a great place to work and learn. Thank you to our transportation staff, the drivers, the trainees, and bus aides. It's a difficult job, and every single day, we're challenged to get our students safely to school, to and from school every single day. Our maintenance and facility staff, our technology staff, our safety and security staff, our central registration staff, our support staff, including secretaries and PCAs, hourly employees, including noontime assistants, our administrators, many of whom are in the audience tonight, our Board of School Directors, and of course, our teachers, nurses, counselors, social workers, psychologists, and all those who work with our students day in and day out. Following Board Vice President Edward Brown's positive and reaffirming remarks on opening day, I focus my words on our ability as educators to positively influence our school environments. I remind our staff that we are considered the greatest gift a child can receive. Teachers. Teachers are a gift. I was excited about our opening ceremony, and the enthusiasm spilled over into our classrooms and schools as we visited our teachers and students. There are so many wonderful interactions happening in our schools with our staff and students. While the work we do in this district is without question rewarding, it is also very humbling. As we walk the halls of each of our schools during the first week of school and met with teachers and students, you could feel the joy and enthusiasm. When we piled back into the van, traveling from school to school, we discussed the awesome responsibility and limitless potential of this district. It is truly beautiful and a precious gem. Our focus is on the faces of the children you saw on the video. We are here to provide them with the best opportunities we can. I understand that certain communities are concerned about the unity we are attempting to bring to this district and community. If we continue to stay the course, status quo, we will never reach excellence. Tonight, there is a resolution that will be considered by our Board of School Directors. If approved by the board, the lease will provide a temporary space for the central office staff whose offices are currently located at Aronomic Elementary School. After much consideration, the administration has located a space that provides the district a necessary and temporary space for parking needs and office space for staff. With administration out of Aronomic, the district can begin to implement its facilities plan and provide learning spaces for elementary students whose faces you saw on our video today. The tour of our schools during the opening week of school and the video we just showed you reminds us of the importance of our work and the decisions we make or do not make. Please remember the pure joy of seeing moms and dads pressing their faces against the window of our kindergarten center. The little girl from Bywood who told me she wants to be a teacher. The little boy at Stoner's who said she wants to be a doctor. The beautiful new high school bathrooms, new football field and track. All of this could be quickly lost if we allow ourselves to focus on the negative. So many individuals positively influence the lives of our students, day in and day out. And it is vital for us to remember that we are in this together. I appreciate the team effort that goes into the work we do daily. We have to work together to control the narrative and tell the story of the great things that are happening in this district every day. Board President Mitchell and members of the Board of School Directors, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Certainly was inspiring, although I did see a few wardrobe changes, so. I remember being there, not at the K Center, but at Hillcrest, pressing my own face up against that kindergarten window. And to think I sent my oldest off to college just a few weeks ago, it's amazing, so. The impact that we can have on our children, you know, and you guys, so, thank you. Now, we're going to have the update from the August 27th Education and Pupils Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Curry, will you read the summary? A detailed summary of this meeting, including the public comments, can be found in Board Docs. It also has all the accompanying presentations that we did go over that night.
Thank you, President Mitchell. The Education and Pupils Services Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, August 27th, here in the boardroom. And we had three agenda items. The first was the Comprehensive Plan Annual Review. 2018-2019 Achieved Goals, which was informational. We also had the Comprehensive Plan Guidelines, which was informational, and Instruction and Curriculum Action Research Topics, which was informational. District Administration reviewed the 2018-2019 Goals Achieved as outlined in the District's Comprehensive Plan. In addition, the presentation included an introduction to the planning process for creating a new future-ready comprehensive plan. Lastly, the presentation included an overview of the action research topics the administrative team analyzed to improve practice. The second agenda item for the evening was one that needed board action. And it's the Flexible Instructional Day FID Program. District Administration presented information on the Flexible Instructional Day FID Program, Act 64, which was recently added to the Public School Code. The Flexible Instructional Day Program FID allows for a school district to deliver instruction in an alternate, alternate manner when circumstances prevent the traditional delivery of instruction. This item correlates to Goal 1 and Goal 5 of the UDSD Comprehensive Plan. And lastly, the last agenda item was on policies. Board action was required. A Policy 239, Foreign Exchange Students. We update, an update to the policy included guidelines for accepting exchange students on a J1 visa and in-group sponsored exchange program. Public comments on item, both were on Item 1. Speaker asked if the indicators for the data listed in the Comprehensive Plan are still in effect and how will they be communicated. Speaker suggested reporting this information on a quarterly basis. And the last comment, under Education and Pupils Services, Item 1, Speaker asked about the action research and suggested it doesn't really spell out the question the district is trying to answer through the mechanism of research. Thank you.
So just as a follow-up to the summary, the board did decide not to move forward the Flexible Instructional Day at this time because we don't have enough information from the state on the implementation of that. And then the policy, board action is required. That is in our policy report tonight. And as far as the topics for the action research, I had asked Mrs. Kelly at a future committee meeting if she could bring back the guiding questions to the board and the public. So that will be happening. The next up is the Finance and Operations Committee Summary. Dr. Taylor?
The Finance and Operations Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, August 27th at 7:00 p.m. There were three agenda items. The first agenda item was the use of facilities. This was an informational item. The Business Office discussed new changes associated with the use of facilities within the district. More specifically, the plan to implement a fee structure for the use of the new high school track and field was presented. There has been a commitment to invest and improve facilities across the district, and the expectation is to create specific rules, regulations, and fees to protect and maintain the district's property. This item correlates to Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. Our second agenda item was also informational. It was talking about the upcoming audits. The Business Office discussed the upcoming 2018-2019 Annual Audit, which is scheduled for October. The expectation is for the final audit report to be brought before the board for approval no later than December. This item correlates to Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. Agenda item number three, we looked at policies that would require board action. There were Policies 003, Bog 1, 005, Bog Organization, 005, Bog 2, 005, Bog 3. All of the bogs were not moved forward. And then there was 810 Transportation, 810.1 Drug and Alcohol Testing, and 810.3 School Vehicle Drivers. Those three were all moved forward for board action today. There were public comments. There were three public comments, and they can be seen in detail in the report located in Board Docs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Ms. Curry?
Thank you, Madam President. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Kelly, do you have a comment on the Instruction and Curriculum Report?
Riverbend is an environmental education center located in Gladwin, PA. And the field trip is an opportunity as a result of the work that Mrs. Beth Riches is doing with the PA seed STEM ecosystem, or ecosystem, sorry, at the IU. So she's been working very hard on this partnership. Riverbend was able to provide, fully donated for all of our fourth grade classes to attend and to experience this field trip. So they will be attending, if approved, tonight, a three-part program. So the first part would be a pre-leçon where teachers would come in from the educational center at Riverbend, provide a lesson, followed by a field trip out to the, the center in Gladwin, and then come back for a post lesson. The focus will be on the environmental and ecology standards, which are fourth grade standards, with an emphasis on watersheds, wetlands, and humans in the environment. Currently, these standards are covered, but they're covered using models in our classrooms, also using stream tables and articles and videos. So the hands-on piece is missing. This would give our, all of our fourth grade students an opportunity to have hands-on experience at an educational center. Again, it's fully, fully donated by Riverbend because of their donations. And the trips would begin as early as the later part of this month, September, going into October. I also encourage parents to look on their website. They have a lot of great opportunities there for students.
Mrs. Kelly, can you tell the public why this wasn't brought forward in the committee meeting? Just to clarify.
Sure. So we went back and forth with the donation process. They were able to fully fund the activity, but it didn't, or the field trips, it didn't come through until last week when Mr. Slarnow and I were on a phone call with them, and they were able to fully fund all of the students. So normally, we would bring it to a committee meeting before saying that we would go on the field trip. But because of the nature of being outside, and if it gets too cold, they would not be able to attend and get the same experience, we wanted to get that September date set. So they'll be getting the trips in late September and through October. If we pushed it off too long to our September meeting, we would have missed that opportunity. We're also looking at how to continue the partnership. If it is successful this year, how to continue the partnership and the donations and how to fund it moving forward. But as that occurs, we would be bringing it to a committee meeting moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just want to say, too, after learning about this, it is really exciting. Like Ms. Kelly said, if parents and teachers can go out on the website, they have amazing opportunities for students and even family days where you can go out to the site. So thank you.
Are there any comments from the public on the Instruction and Curriculum Report? Seeing none, poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci? Dr. Taylor? Mr. Fields? Ms. Curry? Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. The next up is the Personnel Report. Dr. Taylor?
The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from board members?
Yes. Our District TW members voted to approve a collective bargaining agreement. The vote to ratify the contract will be taken tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Counsel and his team for getting us to this point.
Any other comments from board members on the Personnel Report? Comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Pursuant to the Pennsylvania Public Official and Employees Ethics Law, I hereby declare that I am required to abstain regarding the following motion. Personnel Report, Extra Pay for Extra Duty Responsibility, Page 10. For all others, I vote aye.
Mr. Des Newers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci? Dr. Taylor? Mr. Fields? Ms. Curry? Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. The next up is the Policy Report, which is in second reading. Again, it's not everything that we went over at the committee meeting. I'm assuming Mr. Des Newers will be going over that.
The Policy Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from board members? Mr. Des Newers?
The four policies in second reading this evening have moved forward, and they will be adopted if voted so tonight. They are the, they are Policy 239, Foreign Exchange Students. The change there restricts foreign exchange students. They have to be members of a, they have to come to the district through an organized program. They have to come on a specific type of visa and so forth. So it, it just puts some, some guidelines around the, the students we accept. The three other policies are, there have been extensive changes made to update the requirements placed on individuals who drive vehicles professionally for the district.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Melinda Emerson Hayes-
My name is Melinda Emerson-Hasty and I live at 509 Bloomfield, Drexel Hill. And I am coming forward with a comment regarding page two of, of the six pages of the, of this transportation policy. I have a special needs child that I pulled out of the school district and personally put in Delaware Valley Friends School. And I have, for the last two school years, been trying to get support for transportation for my child. And just today, I learned that if his IEP had been written and said that transportation was required, then you would provide it. However, I'm aware that two children every day are transported to the school that my child attends. And so I'm asking that you consider amending this policy, only because I obviously understand with 6,500 kids on the road every day, you got a lot of, you have a lot of transportation on the road. However, my child currently gets to school by me driving him to the overbook train station and he takes the R5 to school every day. My child that has special needs takes the R5 to school every day. And I have to leave work at 3:30 every day to go meet that train at 4 o'clock to retrieve my child. And I feel like there's another way we could perhaps do this in a way that doesn't penalize a, a family. We've lived in this school district for 22 years and paid rather high school taxes in that time. And so I would like this board to consider that if there is transportation already going to a school and it wouldn't cost any additional money or resources to transport a child, that in fact, an additional policy be added to this so that families like mine can be supported to support our special needs child.
So would you stay after the meeting so that I can get you talking to Mr. Marshallak about some of the other things that you brought up?
Yes.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
James Santura, 5228 Apache Lane. Couple of years ago, when Mr. Norelli was the superintendent, I was the state rep at the time. We had a discussion about taking the bus stops off of Township Line Road. I would propose and hope that this board would consider to do it again and make it a permanent policy. It is a dangerous road during those, that time. And I don't think it was the intention of anybody to put the bus stops back on. I just think it happened by natural instinct. But it's to take it half a block off of Township Line is what they did. They went around the block. They picked up, for example, in my neighborhood, they picked up the kids on Pilgrim instead of Township. They picked them up on Dermond instead of Township. They would go around the circle and pick them up there. It's something that I'd like the, I will address it to you, I addressed it to you. I'm sorry, Madam President. It's something I'd like the board to consider. It's a dangerous situation for our kids. I see cars, I live right off of Township Line, half a block. I see cars blowing by school buses all the time. And again, it's not about finger pointing, it's about getting it done the right way. So thank you.
With a suggestion. Are there any other comments from the public on the policy report? Seeing none, poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. The next up is the facilities report, the use of facilities report, and the donation report, please, Mrs. Jordan.
The facilities report, the use of facilities report, and the donation report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption this evening.
Second. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Jordan?
Madam President, on the facilities report, the third item, the relocation of the administrative offices lease, as Dr. McGary had indicated in the superintendent report, administration will be moving out of the Aronomic Building. And I noticed that they'll be moving to 401 Pilgrim Lane, which has a Drexel Hill address. But I do know that this is located in Haverford Township. So if you can explain the due diligence and how you came to the conclusion to rent these offices for the number of years that you've decided on. I don't know who to address this to, Mr. Rogers or Dr. McGary?
It would be a we agreeing to it, not, not a you. Thank you. And I'll let Craig jump in here in a little bit. But we've, we've done our due diligence in looking at properties that would fit our need, cost analysis, several things to consider. Properties that would fit, parking was a big consideration, the space and the number of administrators and staff and files and things that we have to move. Tax implications for the future. Ideally, we'd like to find a property that would not take away taxable properties in our community, meaning by, you know, taking over a property and then the school district takes over property that would then become tax exempt because it becomes a school district property. And it really came down to the, the mission that we were given in 2016 and then again in 2017, when the board moved forward with its facilities plan to put two priorities, one of them bringing Walter Sanko back into the school district, where there are currently five neighborhoods down in the 69th Street area, Sanko students and Charles Kelly students from five different neighborhoods who travel, in some situations, six miles outside of the school district. We feel that having some administrators, adults out of the district a little bit for a temporary basis, to be able to bring back Sanko students sooner than later would be a smart move for, and by the way, we can get out of the lease at any point in time. It's from five to seven years is my understanding of the lease. Craig, anything you want to add to that or did I cover it?
Thank you, Dr. McGary. I know that you did explore properties within the township too, and none of them seem to work out at this time. On the donation report, we do have five members and organizations out of the community that did donate school supplies to our schools. Just briefly, the AAA Club Alliance to Westbrook Park, Councilwoman St. Kella Coles to Bywood, Dr. Daniel Wyndham to Bywood also, Mr. Green to Hillcrest, C, SCG Engagement Team to, oh, their backpacks want to, I guess he just made a donation to the school district. And then also, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Miller, who made a $2,500 donation to the school district for the ribbon cutting of the new turf field that's going to take place on Friday, September 20th. He is also an alumni and this is not his first donation to the school district. He continually gives back to Upper Darby School District. And we actually need more alumni like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from board members? Comments from the public?
James Santura, 5228 Apache Lane. Twofold. One, on the administrative offices, I do know, I'm a real estate agent in the area. I own a brokerage. And I did show one of the properties to the school district that was in contention within Upper Darby. I know you did make an effort. I, I do believe the landlord in Haverford will still have to pay taxes to Haverford, even though it's a school district, they are a for-profit, as would a landlord in Upper Darby. You're saying it's just a wash because you're getting it back?
We're saying that in the long run, we're trying to find a property that would not take away taxes in the district. So if we were to-
If you were to buy it.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. I noticed in the report, there's information regarding Aronomic Elementary School. We had a meeting with the, I'm putting my Pilgrim Gardens Civic Association president hat on now. We had a meeting with the board, with the school district, the administration, and I appreciate you having that meeting. I see what you're doing also with the 69th Street area and getting the input from the residents as well. And I think that's a great idea. And I think it's a great idea because you're doing it ahead of the planning and before you're submitting to the township. We had the meeting at Aronomic. You've submitted for zoning. You were very open that you were going to be submitting for zoning. The biggest concern from the Pilgrim Gardens Civic Association, and I just want to let all of you know this and put you on notice, we will not support a front yard setback variance. We cannot. We've, this township has never once granted one. And we, just as a Pilgrim Gardens, as an association, just fought one in the area. And we came together, we had 75 residents that came opposed a front yard variance. The front yard is anything from the front of the building out to the curb. The concern is, once you set a precedence and you're in a residential zone, in a zoning area, that, that precedence will be used for further variances. So someone living in a twin house then can say, I want to put a, a structure, a parking lot, whatever it is that they're looking to do, in my front yard. And they will have to accept those variances or they'll be in the court system. Unfortunately, we cannot support that. The overall project, we're very enthusiastic about parts of it. As I had said then, we've got concerns about other parts of it. But that is one that I just want to put you on notice that the Civic Association cannot support and will not support.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public?
Good evening. Annette Fanning, 5015 Morvine Avenue. So I just want to first recognize your statements in the beginning, Dr. McGary. I think you said something like, I understand there is a concern about the unity you are attempting to obtain in the Upper Darby School District, which I want to put on record is far from the truth. I'm not sure that was stated very well, right? I don't even know what that means. But the people that live around Aronomic School are taxpayers. Okay? Someone needs to talk to you from the taxpayer point of view. Now, I am way behind on this project and I will admit it. The first I heard of it was not maybe a couple of weeks ago, and I went to the Pilgrim Gardens Civic Association. So some of the things I heard was $23 million. I heard you tell us that you wanted to move the Walter Sankell kids to their neighborhoods, get them out of Glen Olden, which I agree with. There's a lot of moving parts. We're going to move the kindergarten center too. And in regards to the board accepting the move, the moving of the administration, I'm, I have a question. Are you moving the administration now because of this project? That's, that's a question. Is that the motivation behind moving the administration now? Because I know it's been on the boards, up, up in front of the board before.
We really don't normally respond, but tonight, I know we did respond back and forth. But this, moving the admin out of the building has always been the first step in the Aronomic renovation, whether it was a renovation of just the existing space-
Right.
-or, or the renovation and addition.
I, I, I remember that. So let me, I know this is going to, I, I just need to get this out for the purpose of clarifying some things. When we move the administration out, is it true that?
I'm going to go back and forth. How do you come to the bottom of that?
But it's not going to take me long. I, I'm not going to be here until 27. Are there going to be eight classrooms added according to the presentation that was given at the Pilgrim Gardens Civic Association?
No, close to 17.
17, just in the administration area? No, I'm just talking about the administration area.
No, that's about eight, six to eight.
Eight. And there's 14 kids right now per student, per classroom in Aronomic School?
Fluctuates. Some of the classrooms are under 20.
So what would the average class size be?
Yeah, we're, we're going to go back and forth.
So, so let me, okay, so I want to ask another question. But if the average class size-
This really isn't the venue for asking questions, but you certainly can meet with them afterwards to go over your questions.
Okay, so I, I'll just make a statement. So if the average class size is 20 per student and you have eight more classrooms, I mean 20 students per classroom and you have eight more classrooms, it's 160 students. If you increase the 14 students you have now in the other classrooms, I don't know how many there are, I'm going to say maybe 20, 15, and you increase them by 10, we're already increasing the population by quite a large amount of students without spending $23 million and disrupting an entire community with a huge amount of construction, a lifestyle change for sure. The tax increase that's going to happen is going to be very, very large because that budget of $23 million is going to go over budget. I don't know too many projects, I'm in the real estate business, that don't go over budget. And the taxpayer's going to suffer. My taxes, I've been here 30 years, were 1,800 when I moved in. They are $9,200 right now for a 1,800 square foot house. I estimate my taxes at the end of this project, over 30 years, to be $15,600. So there's a large concern here for the future of the township, that the home values and the residents that live there. I just would like some, a little bit of understanding, a little bit of respect for what we're facing, and some empathy towards the taxpayer.
Absolutely. And I, like I said, I'd be happy to meet with you after the meeting with Dr. McGary.
Okay.
Okay?
Comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote please.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. The finance and budget report, Dr. Taylor?
The finance and budget report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any other, are there any comments from the board? I did want to point out that several months ago, the board did make a resolution with a process to accept LURDA applications in the district. A LURDA application is where a particular project can apply for tax relief when they improve a property. In tonight's report on page one, there is a, a property application and tax parcel that the board will be considering for LURDA exemption. That just means that the, the base tax stays the same and the, the tax on the improvements is graduated in over a five-year period. There's also a number of performances that we're approving tonight for the Performing Arts Center, which I know is the crown jewel of our community. So are there any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Newers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. Now that we'll have the collateral assignments, and Mrs. Jordan already said there's no report from the Community College tonight. Dr. Taylor, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit?
The DCIU had its official ribbon cutting for the additions to our Aston campus. We're really excited about it. The construction features two additional wings with classrooms, conference, therapeutic, and meeting rooms, a new gymnasium, playgrounds, state-of-the-art career and technical education classrooms, and several new labs, including a Apple computer lab. And so we're just really excited about it and just wanted to make the announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Mr. Fields, do you have anything from Legislative Council? I know our first meeting is tomorrow morning.
I was just going to say, yes, thank you, President Mitchell. The first meeting of the Legislative Council is tomorrow, of this school year, is tomorrow morning. So we have another meeting, but I do have the agenda. So we'll be discussing state, there's a state and special, there's a, the state-level Special Education Funding Commission is meeting. So we'll be discussing how those meetings are going. They, they met in August and they're meeting each month through the rest of the year to discuss how Special Education Funding can be better distributed throughout the state. There's a couple of bills being floated that address school property taxes. We'll be discussing those. And we'll also be discussing Governor Wolf's proposed changes to charter schools, his proposed charter school reforms. Also, at the federal level, IDEA, Special Education Funding and Fully Funding, this program has bipartisan support in both the House and the Senate. So we can only hope that it will be put up for a vote sometime this year to address the Special Education Funding issues at the federal level. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I just did want to publicly thank Mr. Marshallak and Dr. McGary for meeting with Representative Scanlon this month in regards to Fully Funding- with Representative Scanlon this month in regards to fully funding IDA. I appreciate your advocacy efforts and really walking her through a lot of the challenges that we're facing with that. So thank you so much. Judy, I know there's nothing from the Mendo Hall, Tyson, because it's just the beginning of the school year.
Ms. Jordan, the district-wide home and school?
We did meet, and I think I reported this already though. We did meet in August, and our next meeting is scheduled for October 1st at Beverly Hills Middle School. So we're trying to move each meeting to a different location within the district.
Thank you. Mr. Brown is not here from PSBA, but I will be attending a training tomorrow on onboarding new school directors that's being provided by PSBA in Mechanicsburg. And as far as, that's all we have for collateral assignments. Is there any old business from board members? Nope. Okay, new business. I know we have the election of our PSBA officers. So we're going to conduct a poll vote to elect the PSBA officers for 2020. A poll vote will be taken for each of the positions, and each board member has been provided with the biographies of the candidates. Please state your choice by saying the name of the candidate you're choosing, or what you're abstaining when Craig calls your name, okay?
We can start with the president-elect. Ms. Gentile?
Art Levinowitz.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Art Levinowitz.
Ms. Jordan?
Art Levinowitz.
Dr. Rucci?
Art Levinowitz.
Dr. Taylor?
Art Levinowitz.
Mr. Fields?
Art Levinowitz.
Ms. Curry?
Art Levinowitz.
Ms. Mitchell?
Art Levinowitz. He was the only candidate. He's from the Upper Dublin School District, and he's been very involved in PSBA. And they've actually hosted a lot of their events, which has been nice because it's not terribly far from here.
Next, we have the vice president. Ms. Gentile?
David Hein.
Mr. Des Noirs?
David Hein.
Ms. Jordan?
David Hein.
Dr. Rucci?
David Hein.
Dr. Taylor?
David Hein.
Mr. Fields?
David Hein.
Ms. Curry?
David Hein.
Ms. Mitchell?
David Hein, again, only candidate. These are all volunteer positions, so you can understand. The next is the Central at Large, three-year term.
Also one candidate.
Ms. Gentile?
Julie Preston.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Julie Preston.
Ms. Jordan?
Julie Preston.
Dr. Rucci?
Julie Preston.
Dr. Taylor?
Julie Preston.
Mr. Fields?
Julie Preston.
Ms. Curry?
Julie Preston.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Julie Preston. I do have a question though, for the next section. It's the section advisors, and I know where section is, so did we have to vote on those? No.
I think in the, I think in the past, we voted on each seat. I guess what we'll do is, we can take your poll and then we have to log these electronically. And if we don't have that option, we just won't log those choices.
I know our section advisor.
Her, her term isn't up, so. Okay.
Ms. Gentile?
Marsha Plita?
No, no, we're, we're on section one.
Oh, section one, I'm sorry.
Sabrina.
Sabrina Baker?
Mr. Des Noirs?
Sabrina, I believe it's Baker.
Baker?
Ms. Jordan?
Sabrina Baker.
Dr. Rucci?
Sabrina Baker.
Dr. Taylor?
Sabrina Baker.
Mr. Fields?
Sabrina Baker.
Ms. Curry?
Sabrina Baker.
Ms. Mitchell?
Sabrina Baker.
We'll go through section three. Ms. Gentile?
Ron Cole.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Ron Cole.
Ms. Jordan?
Ron Cole.
Dr. Rucci?
Ron Cole.
Dr. Taylor?
Ron Cole.
Mr. Fields?
Ron Cole.
Ms. Curry?
Ron Cole.
Ms. Mitchell?
Ron Cole.
Next is section five, advisor. Ms. Gentile?
Marsha Plita.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Marsha Plita.
Ms. Jordan?
Marsha Plita.
Dr. Rucci?
Marsha Plita.
Dr. Taylor?
Marsha Plita.
Ms. Fields, Mr. Fields?
Marsha Plita.
Ms. Curry?
Marsha Plita.
Ms. Mitchell?
Marsha Plita. And the next up is the section seven advisor.
Ms. Jordan? Or Ms. Gentile?
Tricia Steiner.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Tricia Steiner.
Ms. Jordan?
Tricia Steiner.
Dr. Rucci?
Tricia Steiner.
Dr. Taylor?
Tricia Steiner.
Mr. Fields?
Tricia Steiner.
Ms. Curry?
Tricia Steiner.
Ms. Mitchell?
Just Tricia Steiner.
Next, go ahead.
The PSBA Insurance Trust. Again, there's two candidates and there's two positions.
So you can vote for two or abstain. Ms. Gentile?
Kathy Swope, Mark Miller.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Kathy Swope and Mark Miller.
Ms. Jordan?
Kathy Swope and Mark Miller.
Dr. Rucci?
Kathy Swope, Mark Miller.
Dr. Taylor?
Kathy Swope, Mark Miller.
Mr. Fields?
Kathy Swope, Mark Miller.
Ms. Curry?
Kathy Swope, Mark Miller.
Ms. Mitchell?
Kathy Swope and Mark Miller. The next is the School Board Secretaries Forum Steering Committee, and we can choose up to three incumbents for a two-year term, and there are four candidates.
Ms. Gentile?
Beth Ann. Beth Ann Ziegler, Crystal Mance, Jennifer Davidson.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Crystal Mance, Jamie Lynn Zermrowski, and Jennifer Davidson.
Ms. Jordan?
Beth Ann Ziegler, Crystal Mance, and Jennifer Davidson.
Dr. Rucci?
Beth Ann Ziegler, Crystal Mance, Jennifer Davidson.
Dr. Taylor?
Beth Ann Ziegler, Crystal Mance, and Jamie Lynn Zermrowski.
Mr. Fields?
Beth Ann Ziegler, Crystal Mance.
Ms. Curry?
Beth Ann Ziegler, Crystal Mance, and Jennifer Davidson.
Ms. Mitchell?
Beth Ann Ziegler, Crystal Mance, and Jennifer Davidson. Concludes the PSBA elections. We're now at the time of our public hearing. I'll call on those who are signed in. In the order that you signed in, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes, please. The first speaker is Annette Fanning.
I'm already.
Okay, so you'll pass, okay. The next is Eileen Boland. Okay.
Do you want me to ask a question?
No, it's public comments. Rob and Maureen Libertor?
We're good.
Okay. Melina Emerson?
Already.
Okay. Jamie Santora?
James Santura, 5228 Apache Lane. This time, I'm speaking on behalf of the Upper Darby Home and School. Two-fold. One, we want to, of course, express our condolences to the Brown family, and I did not catch the name of the crossing guard, but of course, to his family as well. Mr. Brown was the former president of the Upper Darby School Board, uh, Upper Darby Home and School. And we wanted, to his entire family, his children and extended family, our condolences on my behalf, the entire board and our co-president, Esther Bob. Second, I want to thank Dr. McGary for hosting the meeting with the school board presidents. I think that's very effective, and I look forward to continuing those meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you. There are no other members of the public signed in to speak for tonight, so a motion is in order for adjournment.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.